Good morning. It is Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, and our call today is for the supervisors meeting to order. Please stand if you're able and join us in stating the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next would be to adopt today's agenda, and I just wanted to make one change if possible. Under additional items would be to move item number four, the discussion and consideration on the base coverings to be first on the agenda and then go right after that with the chambers. Request right after that.
I move to approve today's agenda with the changes noted.
Second. Then moved in seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Now we'll move on to public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anyone who'd like to make public comment, if you're in the meeting room here, please come forward. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand function and we will call on you or then you can unmute yourself with star nine. And I'll wait a few seconds to see if anyone wants to unmute. And I'm not seeing anything, so we will close public comment number one. We have no agency reports today, so we'll look onto consideration of minutes.
Move approval of minutes.
Second.
Then moved in seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Next is consideration of personnel actions.
Move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Then moved in seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda items. Is there anything anyone's informed from today's consent agenda item? No? Okay.
Move approval of consent. Second.
Then moved in seconded, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's? Aye. Looks like we are now to public hearing items. So we've got the first consideration ordinance number 295 amending chapter 32 road identification address numbering system of the Story County Code of Ordinances. Amelia and Jenna?
Aye. Sorry, I had to...
You saved the PowerPoint in your folder.
Just didn't open them, I guess. Okay, so this is an ordinance amending chapter 32, which is has to do with road naming and addressing standards for the counties for us to follow. Our intern Jenna did a lot of work on this, so I wanted to thank her. And she's going to go through some of the changes. So take it away, Jenna.
Thanks. My name's Jenna Gilliam. I'm the planning and development intern, as she said. As part of the Story County land development regulations, the comprehensive overview and update of those assigned to planning and development as part of the 2021 work program, staff has completed changes to chapter 32 of the road identification and address naming system. Here's a draft of, or sorry, staff presented a previous draft of this ordinance to the Story County engineer, Derry Moon, and he provided us with some feedback. We also attended a conceptual review meeting with the Story County 911 database coordinator, Amanda Pyle, to communicate these amendments to her as well and get feedback. And lastly, we got feedback from the Story County Assistant Attorney, Ethan Anderson. And the major changes that we've made to this chapter are going to be in the following PowerPoint slides. So this first change is with the maintenance or replacement of subdivision slash private road name signs. Here, we just clarified the process for maintaining or replacing the subdivision slash private road name signs, including that any costs associated with the maintenance or replacement by the engineer would be the subdivision homeowners or homeowner associations at their own cost.
I'll just hop in here with an example. So it's in the ordinance right now that it's at their cost for maintenance. It's just not super clear. And that's a problem, especially in some of these older subdivisions that don't have homeowners associations. We get a lot of pushback from property owners who need to replace their markers that, you know, this should be at the county's cost where are coded. It does state that it's theirs to maintain, so we just wanted to clarify this.
Does this require standardization of road signs?
So I think there is an option that they could create their own road name sign, but I believe the county engineer's office does have, for instance, how high letters have to be, what color background already. In that case, I did communicate what the standards were with that homeowner, if he wanted to do his own sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So our next change is one of the major ones we discussed with the other county departments, which was our road renaming process. As of right now, in section 3204, 4B2, we have the road name change process can only be initiated by a petition of 75% property owners along the road. Changes proposed to facilitate road name change when annexation does not take in all properties along the road.
Yep. So what this means is, for instance, this recent Carmoli annexation, you can see it's Teller inside Ames to the north, and then it becomes 580th here in the county. Ames would like to readdress Carmoli because it can, because it's in city limits now. But then you've got this weird stretch of county addresses on 580th and then one city address south of there and city addresses north of there. And so we wanted to introduce a process for cities who have done annexations to rename a road to maintain the consistency of our addressing grid for better emergency response.
So if the, if the city annex is to the center of the road, who prevails? Because it's 50% city, 50% county?
Right. So this, in this instance, with this change, it's not really, the city could request it in that case.
How much?
To change the road name, yes. But in this case, you know, they didn't annex to the center of 580th in front of those residential properties. So they could also request to rename the rest of 580th to Teller. This is just a recent example. This has come up before. I was just concerned when we're going to have a four-digit address for Carmoli on 580th and it doesn't, it's not going to match anything else in that road. So. And so originally, we wrote that pretty broadly, that ability of cities and other public entities to request road name changes. And we wrote it pretty broadly because we've been having a recent request from folks in the Squaw Valley subdivision to rename Squaw Road, that they were unable to get 75% of the property owners on the road to sign the petition, which is the current requirement. And so we wrote it pretty broadly in the case that the Board of Supervisors would like to initiate that amendment. However, we had the county attorney's office review it, and they were concerned, not necessarily a legal issue, but you know, ethically, how can the board petition itself? And felt like that needed to be more narrowly tailored. So at Ethan's advice, we've rewritten on the next slide that section, just to be more narrowly tailored to only when annexation is occurring can other government entities petition for road name changes without that 75% petition? And just to maintain the consistency of the addressing grid.
So you're saying that we could not?
Yeah.
And the way this is written, we could not on our own change the name of Squaw Road?
Right. That was the recommendation from the county attorney's office. Yeah. So a couple options here. You know, we published the ordinance with the broader language in it that will allow you to. And so we're recommending approval as presented before you with this alternative put into the ordinance. If you wanted to remand the first consideration and have us look into with Ethan, you know, could we more narrowly tailor the government entities requesting the petition? You know, for instance, in cases where a government entity has taken previous action to initiate a change of a geographic feature? I mean, we could try to look into that this week and set first consideration for next week. But otherwise, staff is just recommending tailoring that section down to not allow the Board of Supervisors to petition itself, just to allow cities to change road names in the case of annexations. I know that's confusing, but.
So what was attached to the agenda was does not include that alternative?
Yep. And so.
It includes this language in it.
The published ordinance doesn't include this alternative. The memo on the agenda discusses the process if you'd like to change the ordinance language during the adoption process. If you took action today to adopt this alternative language, we have three days to put it on the auditor's desk or auditors. We put all ordinances out for the public to find in the auditor's office, so we just have to put that amended language there in place with the current ordinance.
Lucy, did you want to make a comment on that process? Lucy? Your hand's raised, that's why we're asking. And I believe you're unmuted.
Is there something in the chat?
No.
No.
Yeah.
But I see her in Lucy.
Yeah, we can't hear you here, Lucy? So I guess I'm a little confused.
Yeah.
For Lucy. So that length, that process language there is currently not?
Not. And that's because we'd already published, I didn't want to change it.
Gotcha.
But you during the consideration process can direct us to make changes and we just have to make sure those get.
She says she doesn't have a microphone, we'll take the message in the chat.
Okay.
Over the red button with the four where it says more? Yeah. If presidential addresses are involved, I would likely, I would like any notice to property owners and sort of information about vote increasing information. I can hear you only, see the chat, I don't have a microphone.
Sure. Okay. So that, when we do a road name change or there's properties that have been annexed, our department has to send a letter to all affected property owners and give them 30 days to update their mailing address with their bank and all that. So we could add in this letter shall include information on vote increases for the next consideration. That would be something that would be easy to do.
Do we want to talk about this issue now or do we want to wait till we're through the entire presentation?
I think you got through the entire presentation, we'll circle back to that. Please, still have some questions in there?
All right. This next change is to section 3207-1. It is about relocating address markers. We had the engineer tell us that there had been a couple of times where they would put the address marker at the end of the driveway and then during construction it would get tore down, ran over, and the property owners or contractors would move it. So he suggested that we had a standard for allowing contractors or homeowners on private or subdivision roads to move the address markers for construction or location preference. If the marker is not in the main driveway entrance where they originally put that, the engineer's office shall be notified if it is moved and they will forward it to the Story County 911 service board for approval of that location.
Who notifies, whose responsibilities is to notify the engineer's office and homeowners?
Yes.
In reality, that might not happen. And I have concerns about that in terms of the 911, 911 calls.
Yeah. I think what's been happening is, you know, folks in subdivisions have been moving their addresses closer to their houses. They don't like to look out by the road. And then we don't have a process to allow that or we need more teeth to enforce it, which is about what this requirement is about. So if the 911 board says no, then they've got to move it back to the end of the driveway.
I think probably it'll get found out if somebody moves it, not when when there's a 911 call and somebody can't find the address. That's the only problem with that.
Okay.
I don't know how to make it clear to people how important it is for their own personal safety not to move those things.
Absolutely.
And when we say we're allowing contractors or homeowners to move them, it's happening anyway, but I don't know, and I feel real, it makes me, that makes me kind of nervous.
Okay.
I don't have a good solution to it, but it makes me nervous that people are moving signs that that first responders that rely on being.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And just to clarify, that we're saying that they, they should notify us before they move it to get permission to do so. But I, but I agree that that's not what's necessarily happening in the field all the time.
And is that, is that a permanent?
It would be.
Move?
Yeah.
And just while they're doing the construction?
This is about permanent moving. So it's on it's under 3207. And it just states that county responsibility, the county places address markers at the main driveway entrance of the property. If the contractor or homeowner along a subdivision or private road wishes to install the address marker in a location other than the main driveway entrance, they shall notify the engineer's office, which shall forward it to the Story County 911 service board for approval.
Can that be stated that they need approval before moving it?
Yes.
That's my suggestion.
Yep. An address marker shall not be moved without prior approval. We can add that. And we can add something to, we have a 911 addressing page on the website. We could add something there as well that just says, don't move your marker. It's for your safety. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, we can go to the next one. Section 3208 is about annexations and the addressing for those. There was already a process for sending out a work order.
That's kind of what we talked about with Lucy before, where we send in a work order and then our department sends a letter to the affected property owners. And we just wanted to make sure that the process for that was super clear. Because it kind of, it's a little bit different in the code for folks that live on county roads versus in subdivisions. So we didn't change those processes. We just really wanted to clarify step by step what's to happen.
So the second point, what she was saying was, we included the process in which work orders are initiated. They will be provided to the engineer, 911 database coordinator, auditor's office, and assessor's office. That was already stated in the county process for public roads. But we created.
We, we just clarified that there's also a letter of notification that goes out for subdivision and private roads under B.
That is the last change that we had. So here today, Story County Planning and Development staff recommend the approval of ordinance 295 as presented today with alternative one.
And that would include Lucy's recommended changes and then that additional statement about not moving the marker until you have approval.
As well as Ethan's.
And yes.
So the first alternative is as presented today with your comments and Ethan's. The second one is the Story County Board of Supervisors approves ordinance 295 amending chapter 32 on first consideration, which was the broad language we had proposed on that memo last week in the ordinance that was published onto the agenda. And then the third alternative is that the Story County Board of Supervisors denies ordinance 295 amending chapter 32 on first consideration. So that's the second consideration for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021. And then the fourth alternative is the Board of Supervisors remains ordinance 295 amending chapter 32 back to staff for additional information and directs staff to set first consideration for Tuesday, August 17th.
So let me be clear about what the discussion we're having about changes. Anything that we've talked about today, if we recommend, if we approved your recommendation one, those changes would not go in because that's not how they were on the agenda?
No, alternative one is as presented today.
As presented today?
With the changes that were discussed. And alternative two is just as it was posted.
So the changes that were discussed, we touched on the road renaming, but we didn't talk about how it might be worded differently?
No, but we can do that still.
Okay. But if we were to do that, it seems like we would be looking at the fourth recommendation, not the first one?
That would, that would, yeah. I would prefer to, if we wanted to tailor that language some more, to go back to Ethan and set first consideration for another date. Just because of how important and sensitive that topic is.
Certainly. The other two then were not removing or moving 911 signs without prior approval. What was the next one?
The letter to folks that have been annexed or road name changes should include vote increases.
Okay. And then it also had that Ethan's language in there?
Yeah. And if you chose alternative four, you could include changes as presented and then clarify what other area we should look into further.
That seems to be the cleanest thing to have, decide on the changes now and have them.
Representing, clearly, probably.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, rather than having to follow, you know, this conversation.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'd like to have some discussion on the road renaming issue. I understand, you know, when I look at what county attorney has said. He's got the road name change to drive, allow the county Board of Supervisors petition itself to change road names for potential political reasons.
So for instance, you know, the example that I spoke with Ethan about was, you know, we could rename it after a president if we wanted, or you know, some other figure down the road. It might have unintended future consequences.
There is no doubt that something like that, you know, can be abused, but supervisors are elected officials and I think we really want to look at, you know, what do constituents want? Is this a popular thing, you know? Is this, is this something that is called for for some other reason? And the one that probably is called for for some other reason is that we already joined with other jurisdictions to change the name of what was formerly Squaw Creek to Iowa Creek, which is something that's being done nationwide and, you know, so I don't think that's a political reason kind of thing. I think that's just in terms of, you know, diversity issues and, and, and past, you know, things that were acceptable previously and no longer being what it is.
Yeah.
So I think that, and I think that is somewhat, you know, I think it's very sensitive issues. I think if we were looking at changing the name, you know, without, absent of, you know, absence of some kind of petition, then we would want to be very careful in doing that and have a good discussion and probably get input. So, but I think it's worth us having the ability to do that because of things that do come up that we don't anticipate now.
Okay. Some language I was just thinking of that could be more narrowly tailored in what cases the Board of Supervisors may petition itself would be if there was, the Board of Supervisors or another public entity had changed the name of a public building or a geographic feature or other institution and we also included a lower petition number and includes, you know, 60% of property owners affected along the road. That was something I thought of. Dubuque County has 60% requirement for petition signatures in all cases, but most other counties have 75.
I guess looking kind of pros or cons of that, you could potentially get more people that wouldn't sign onto that petition at that. But also the question is, do you want to lower that particular threshold of signatories at the same time?
Yeah, I, rather than, I guess I'm more thinking of allowing the option of the supervisors to act. And some of the things I'm thinking are I don't want to do a specific example, but let's say a road gets named something and 20 years later it becomes either a very bad thing to have a road named. Say, okay, we've learned some things since then. Or the other thing is, and I'm not saying this is one you'd want to do, but sometimes you'll end up inadvertently having names that were really close together and it caused confusion in the public. You know, I think there's more than one reason it might be a good thing to do it, but we can't predict all those reasons.
Okay.
So I would, I would maybe just leave it that the Board of Supervisors could do it, could initiate a name change on their own.
I would, I would say if it's, if it's something, if it's named something and we find out later as we grow that is not an appropriate name, then I think that's, that's worth having more conversations with the people who would be affected by the name change. I do worry that we would be opening up a box. While I, I agree, I don't want to see inappropriate names or confusion. I think I would err on the side of caution because we don't know we, we don't know what will, what will come in the future. And just because we know what our intentions are and we know that we are well-intentioned doesn't guarantee that in the future someone would be well-intentioned.
And somebody might have to agree with our intentions anyway, so well-intentioned is a relative term.
Right, right. And I think anytime we set up a situation where we take the voice away from others, I think that is potentially dangerous.
And just as, you know, I agree, but just as a reminder, we, when we were asked by the US Bureau of Geographic Names to weigh in on a petition that had been given to them about renaming former Squaw Creek as Iowa, we did, we did get a lot of, we reached out to a lot of people, a lot of organizations and got a lot of feedback. out to a lot of people, a lot of organizations and got a lot of feedback then. And, you know, and that was just that we were making a recommend, making a recommendation. So I would agree. I guess I, yeah.
I guess I would, I would ask specifically to Swat.
Road, Road and Valley, yeah.
Here, what, what was, what was the, what was the issue with the landowners or the residents that didn't want to sign? Like what, what conversations were had?
Yeah, yeah. So I believe Stephanie Peters is on, who was the one that was initiating that. And there is a public comment period. I told her about the meeting and she said she was going to attend. But my feeling is first, there was a lot of confusion about changing a road name versus changing the subdivision name. And when you change a subdivision name, you have to tell, you have to get permission from your mortgage and you have to change your deed. And there's all these other steps and it's way more costly. There's attorney's fees involved. And I think that was at one point discussed at homeowners association meeting and perhaps the road name change was a little bit conflated with, am I going to need an attorney? I believe that then that was clarified with folks who lived along that road. But I also think there's probably an education piece or just, you know, a lack of interest. It does, you know, it does require some work from folks to change.
Yeah, absolutely. The subdivision name is nothing that the county names or the county has any authority to name. That's totally that HOA or subdivision, the owners in the subdivision collectively.
Yep.
And that's, and I don't even know that it's, it's not formal as a government name.
It's just on the plaque.
It's on the plaque.
Yeah, and I believe that, you know, if the subdivision wanted to switch out its sign and call it something else, that wouldn't require that large process. It wouldn't be formal, but if they wanted to formally change it, we'd need to. Yeah.
I don't have anything else.
I mean, President, you were asking my questions, but I had down on that as well. So that you've answered.
Okay.
That you've answered that for myself.
Yeah.
Does it, do we expect that changing it to include those whose current and future addresses would be affected by the name change? Is that expanded a lot?
No, my concern was the previous language to use a budding.
Along the road?
Along the road. And we have folks who don't have frontage all the time, who we address off of the road through the easement they use. And so property owners would be affected who don't have road frontage by the road name change but aren't required to sign the petition. And that doesn't impact Swat Valley, for instance, but we have a lot of folks that use easements, so.
Any additional questions? Okay, very good. I will open the public meeting. If you have a comment on this, first consideration of this ordinance and you're on Zoom, could you please use the raise hand function so that we can call on you? I see a number of people on here and so we'll just wait a few seconds to see if anyone would like to make comments. You know, Amelia, you said you thought somebody was on, you didn't want to make a comment. Don't see that person on. And I can't even read that.
I'm not sure.
That's a county number. That's what I can't say.
Okay.
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make comment on today's public hearing? I do see a hand that you've been up. All right, I believe we've got County Torresdale would like to make a comment or transfer What percentage of people did, that did sign the petition? What was the percentage of people that did sign the petition?
I think it was around 72. I think there were one short.
Okay.
How many needed to sign?
75%, and there's 11 properties. So I think eight did and they needed nine.
Oh, that are along the road.
So there's only 12 on that road.
So it's not the entire.
I think there's 11 on the road. Yeah, it's not the entire.
Entire subdivision just along the road.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, because you can't change something.
No, right, right, right.
But, you know, our department would be happy to do some sort of letter. We're, I spoke with Sandra about potentially doing a public meeting, but we didn't know if that would be, I don't want it to be, I think, I don't want to create more tension, especially talking about a sensitive topic. Maybe just a letter explanation from the Board of Supervisors or our department could be good to.
Anyone else that would like to make comments that are on Zoom? Could please click star or raise your hand, raise hand function? Wait just a few more seconds and then I will close the public hearing. I just know sometimes it can take a little bit to get the technology to work right. Okay, I'm not seeing, are you seeing anyone? Right, okay, I'm not seeing anyone, so I will close the public hearing.
Further discussion? Can you point me into the ordinance itself? And I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to look at it. So I did that memo, but can you point me to in the ordinance itself where the section is that Ethan commented on?
It's, I started.
Okay, hit the section with all the red. No. And so specifically it is under B.
So the whole, it does require a public hearing before the board?
Yes. So right now, all it says is representatives of 75% of legal property owners adjacent to the road shall sign a petition requesting the road name change. And then it comes to the Board of Supervisors for a public hearing.
So there's a public hearing whether 70%, 5% of the property owners request it or whether the board petitions itself?
Yes.
The same process?
Yes.
So if, so if the board proposed a change, there would be a public hearing and everybody who would be affected by the change would get notified and would have an opportunity to comment?
Yes, so that, we added that requirement specifically. We, the petition from, the government entity should include proof of notification of those property owners.
So previously, if 75% of the property owners signed petition, we could just go ahead and change it without any.
With a public hearing. Yeah.
That was done previously.
That was previous, yeah. So there's the stricken text on the next page and that was the previous process.
So your public hearing should not be held.
Oh, I see.
And we kept that. We just moved it around.
We just moved it around. That's why it's stricken.
Yeah.
So I guess I have a question of would it be cleaner to have this brought back? With some of the discussions that we've had today, it's just cleaner for the public to understand what has been done. Well, that's a question that I'm throwing out.
I think it could be, but I don't know if we've decided on direction for sure.
Well.
Let me, let me, let me share why I still would not be comfortable with it even though there would be public hearings, is that even though someone could come in and share their position, the Board of Supervisors could still do whatever they want. Thanks for your, thanks for your comment. I still, I still think it's putting a lot of control in the hands of the supervisors.
Currently, the board does not have that authority. Is that correct?
No, you have to receive a petition for property owners.
Right, and so Ethan's language is clarifying, still continue to clarify that the board.
Doesn't have authority.
Doesn't have that authority.
Only cities can without petitions if they've done an annexation and there's addressing issues. I guess a third option would be if you wanted the board to have authority, you could require a petition, a simple majority or 55% or 60, 65%, a lower petition number.
There's something to me about eight out of 11 people want the name of a road changed. Seems like a goodly amount of people. And when you told me that, that made me think again about 75%, you know?
Yeah, yeah, we, applicant asks, can we round that? I said, no.
I'm rounding up, we only have 72, 2.7. So, yeah, it's, yeah.
And how long has this original ordinance been in place?
Oh, gosh. I do not know the answer to that. If we end on it, does chime in.
So quite some time.
Yeah, at least, it's 2015. I mean, clearly prior to that.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
But you said most counties have 75%.
Yep, Pope County does, Pottawatomie County does. Dubuque had 60. I think Johnson County has 75% too.
Kind of sounds like that seems to be a little bit more of the standard threshold is to be 75%.
Road renaming was prior to 1998.
I was just wondering how long that threshold's been in place. That's why, that's why I was asking.
How often has it been done? We've gotten petition for a name change of street. Do you have an idea?
We keep track.
Actually, I don't know if it's.
Well, these are petitions because they were after annexation, for instance, when you know how the city annexed to the center of the road. So East Lincoln Highway became East Lincoln Highway.
I don't think it says petition.
But I don't think these were ones we've received petitions for. Gosh, Onion Creek Lane, maybe, and Deer Run Lane, 209th and 201st to those two in 1997, those might have been. I could look into it.
So there's been a few?
Yeah, but every, I think.
Those are small, those are also small.
Yeah, I think everything else looks like it was probably initiated post-annexation.
Further questions, direction, thoughts, and the proposed recommendations? I think I hear some reservation on, if that's where our discussion is, on recommendation number one because of the discussions that we've had so far, but I'm not sure we're clear on all the discussion areas that we've had so far.
I wouldn't mind lowering the percentage required in petition and my reasoning would be that there still is public input, the process that you put together and there's a lot of public input. I just, and I hadn't thought about that until I hear that you gave that number and I thought that's, if I could share the people who's saying, I don't want this address anymore. You know, so I would be okay with lowering the percentage because it would allow us to discuss it more and see what a majority of people, what the majority wanted. And maybe that would even change people's minds. I don't know. No, I would be for lowering
We have that road number two that it petitioned. Did you change its name? Is that correct?
Sorry, could you say that again?
I said, from what you were saying here, were you saying that we are, what you kind of technically have right now that you're aware of, is that there have been two?
It looks like it. I'm honestly just guessing based on, we have to keep track of road name changes in the back of this ordinance. And so two are clearly subdivision roads on this list that aren't annexed. So I'm guessing, but these were, yeah, in 1997. So we don't get them a lot.
They write the other ones look like annexations.
And I'll just say, I'd be more comfortable if we wanted with a change in the percentage to just send it back. So I have to republish and talk with Ethan and reroute it.
I'm not sure how I feel about, quite honestly, lowering that percentage. When it's been there for quite some time, it seems to be the standard in several other counties to justify lowering that percentage.
Yeah, and I, I think we have to be careful tailoring something to a specific desire or situation.
Okay, and I understand exactly what you're saying and I'll, I still would like to see something different, but it doesn't seem like that's the role of the board and I understand that. So I'll let that one go. I am, I am really, really do want to see prior approval before moving a 911 sign.
Yeah.
And I agree with including vote increasing information whether it's sent out. So those two, I think, are things that we probably should.
I would agree. I mean, it's, it's in defense of public safety and if someone can't, you know, find the address line to know where they're at whenever.
So I, it's not going to be there, excuse me. And, and I, I think we've had discussion that since, rather than just make the changes here verbally, we should probably republish or repost it on agenda. So that would be more, excuse me a second. Are you ready for a motion?
Sure.
I would move that the Supervisors remand ordinance 295, amendment chapter 32, road identification, address number existence of Story County Code of Ordinance. Suspect staff for additional information and direct staff to set first consideration for Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, and the changes being as discussed.
Okay.
I have a second. The movement second, is any further discussion? Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
Thank you. Good discussion. Next, we need to talk on the agenda was the face covering. Item number four under additional items, so a little wiggle.
Good morning. And Linda might be able to discuss this a little bit more. I have put on the agenda just to discuss and consider additional mitigation efforts due to COVID. And then I also put on there our face covering policy for employees to discuss whether the Board would like to reinstate that or not due to the increase in cases, so. I just made some real minor, minor changes to that, just removed, just updated it a little bit, put in there regardless of vaccination status in the face covering policy, and then removed the, the statement that said directions had to create your own. I just cleaned up the policy a little bit. All in all, it's pretty much, it's the same as it was previous.
The reason I asked, thanks for putting this on the agenda. The reason I asked and put it here to consider it is because Story County is currently a high risk of transmission county, according to the CDC. And it, my intent would be that, my thought is that we could reinstitute the face covering policy with the changes that you made, which are good changes, until Story County risk goes back to at least a moderate risk level. I was contacted by one person who asked that if people were vaccinated, got a vaccine, vaccine card, that they should be exempt or asked if they could be exempt from this. I know that people who are vaccinated don't get the Delta variant as often. But I know people who have been vaccinated, who have gotten, come down to the Delta variant. And I also know that what I've read says that it is as contagious in a vaccinated person as somebody who did not get a previous vaccination. And since face covering is to protect others, I, I don't think we should make an exception regarding vaccination status. The CDC is not recommending it, and I think we should follow CDC guidance on this. You know, there are things that we can't do, that we might want to think, you know, that, that I know other, other states, other areas are thinking about. There are things that local government in Iowa can't do. We know that. And I don't want to debate whether or not, you know, what those are, because they're not within our authority, but this is something that is within our authority. I think it's our responsibility to protect our employees and to protect the residents of Story County who come here to do, come to any of our buildings to do business. And that's why I asked that be placed on the agenda for discussion. So, thanks again for the updates. Those are good ones.
Questions, comments? Yeah, I, I agree. I also think it's important that we're following the CDC guidance.
You know, my only concern is that people are saying the Delta variant is so much more contagious. And we have social distancing, kind of as we were instructed to do that before, six feet. I, I think that's what people are used to, though. I think that makes sense. But I would just urge people to be very extremely cautious because of everything that's been said about this, this variant being more contagious than viral loads of people carry being so high.
So, and I guess I have just for clarification from based on what we did before. So if we were to move forward with this, this would only cover parts of the buildings or areas that the Supervisors have control over that other departments need to adopt in, for their particular offices as well.
Correct. That's how it worked before is, is if, you know, the elected offices would, for their own areas and their employees. But for the common areas, restrooms, break areas, stuff like that, those are under control by the Board of Supervisors. I do know the last time the majority of everybody followed this, just to protect everybody.
Sure.
But yeah, it wouldn't be any different than, than the last time it was implemented.
The other question I had, and I had reached out, you got prior to this, was talked about the face coverings, and it says that the county provide with two class face coverings. And my question had been to Alyssa prior is, is that thing will provide two? Again, I know we did that initially, so I wasn't sure on that particular language back in here, how that's being interpreted.
And, and I can remove that, or we just know that we've already provided the two. We do have some extra. Most of the employees chose to purchase their own, provide their own based on their, you know, whatever type of face covering worked best for them. I don't, you know, I, for all new employees, we would, we would definitely, I've got some in there if they want new face coverings. We still have some extra. We have, we have disposable. I know some departments and offices might provide them if they're working directly with, you know, I'm thinking the jail and different things like that, so. I mean, I can remove that, or I can just leave it in there. And then if somebody needs something, we can use our, what we have. We do have COVID. I think there's still COVID funds if we need to order some more online. I think they're more readily available than they were a year, over a year ago.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
So.
And the COVID anymore is.
And we don't have an enforcement mechanism.
There isn't, no.
In here.
And, and it's really tough to enforce as far as, you know, employees of other, other elected officials. But I, I think having the policy, most of them did abide by the policy last time.
Sure.
And I've seen more and more people just recently wearing, you know, when they go out of their office, they, they throw face covering on at their, you know, that's their own choice, so.
I do have a question, because what, it looks like we're discussing is both the requirement that employees wear face covering and that there's a requirement in our buildings.
Yeah, and that's how I, I was going to ask that of Linda, too, that, that was how, I believe there were two separate things, one for the employees and then one for the county building.
And previously, if I'm correct, we didn't have to do a policy.
Nope.
We just directed that signage.
Yep.
Be, be put back, put up to state that, you know, that's consistent with our employee policy, basically. For anybody to come in.
That's correct. We didn't have a policy for our buildings. The Board just voted to have the public or any visitors wear, we posted signage on the doors.
So we have the authority to do that, is my question. Yeah, I guess my question is where it says that all visitors must wear versus recommend, and I'm, are we going to turn people away and say you can't, you know, do business at the treasurer's office or whatever if it's a must? And we don't have an ordinance related to that? That's, that's my question, is with the word must.
We don't need an ordinance because it's a rule, because it's our building, is my understanding. It's our direction, you know, we don't need, the ordinance we had before covered the entire county, geographically, Story County. We don't need an ordinance to make rules about our buildings, is my understanding. Is that yours, Alyssa?
That's my understanding. Now, I know there is state law that was signed into place. I'm not an attorney. I know there's different interpretations. I don't know if, if we have anybody on.
Yeah.
The Attorney's Office. I, I would not recommend, I would try to find a way to serve our citizens if they come in. I wouldn't just, I don't recommend turning people away. I think we have to be very careful.
Right. I guess that's where I'm looking at the word must, because my understanding is we can recommend. I'm not sure about the require, as much as, I mean, I could like to require. That's the thing I'm, I'm clear of, but. I did talk with Ethan this morning, and he was more inclined to say we could recommend the public wear, wear the face covering.
What did Pope and Lynn County do? Did they recommend or require?
They're, they're requiring.
They're requiring visitors to wear face coverings, and City of Des Moines is requiring. So, yeah, it's gone different ways.
Right.
Yeah, I guess to me, we're looking at a time when schools are coming back into session, and kids 12 and under are not yet able to be vaccinated. We're looking at Iowa State students coming back, cannot be required to be vaccinated. We're looking at the state fair. We're looking at a whole lot of things that could be problematic, to say the least, in terms of spread of the Delta variant. And I, my personal preference would be to, for signage to say requiring, but not require that our employees protect people. I just think we need to send a strong message. You know, but I also don't want to put employees in a bad situation.
How long have we said are expected? Sure, all visitors are expected to wear a face covering.
If, if that makes me feel better, you know, I could, I could go with that. We ask that you wear a face covering.
Or are urged, or, or something.
Well, that's what we're, that are recommended, right?
Yeah.
I, I mean, you're, we're recommending that they wear a face covering.
Ted, is that raised?
Yeah. Ted, Ted Raffington? We're trying to unmute you, Ted. I think you're unmuted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So, um, I just wanted to say that I understand we want to be cognizant of the law and not go overboard, but the more ambiguous we are, the more difficult it is, especially for the folks in my office to handle the policy. If we, if we get somewhat ambiguous, we have some folks who come in who are upset that others are not masked, some members of the public who are upset that others aren't masked. If we can't really, you know, turn down service, that's fine. But I don't know that we'll see a lot of compliance if we're ambiguous. I think we're fine putting up the signs, but I just, having seen the way that people have reacted over the last year, it's, we're going to struggle in our office to see more than about 50%. I think 50% of the people will, 50% of the people won't. And I want it to be clear to our folks how and if we're supposed to do anything with people who refuse to wear masks or decline to wear masks, however we want to word it. So I guess I am in total agreeance with Linda. I think we are in a dangerous place, and we need to say something. I'm just doubtful that if we're ambiguous, we're going to get much buy-in. So I guess you guys can handle it however you feel is best. I just know that it's going to be a challenge to really enforce or expect a lot of usage. So, just kind of my two cents. Thanks, thanks for, for listening.
I have a question. So when we did still have the, previously, we had the face covering requirement for the public. How did you have people who refused to go back and get a, a face covering, and how did you handle it?
We had, in total, probably four people that refused to, to put a face covering on. We told those people that they would need to work with us through the phone or email and use our Dropbox because we had to provide a safe environment for everyone else. At that time, the county attorney's office said we were, we were kind of backed up in that stance because we were still providing the services people needed. We were just providing them in an alternative manner. I think the example I was given is if somebody walked in completely naked, we probably wouldn't help them either. We would ask them to go home and either call us or put on clothes. So we did have to turn some people away. I think most people agreed to put on the mask when we told them that they didn't have a choice. But I think about two or three, possibly up to four people did leave the office. And I don't know if they came back in or if they ended up working with us through email.
And the other thing I forgot to mention is property tax collections. Property taxes will be payable September, so you might expect to have lots more people coming into your office.
Yeah. Ju- just a quick update. I told you guys I would update you through email, but it looks like we will send those out next Wednesday or Thursday. They'll be mailed out. So it should pick up in about two weeks. We should see a lot of people begin paying.
Does your notice, since you brought that up, talk about all the, now, talk about all the other ways you can pay your property taxes besides coming to the treasurer's office and encouraging people to do that?
Yeah, we encouraged a line that, we told them we encourage them to pay online as that's the cheapest for them. It's less than a stamp to pay online, and it's the easiest to process. We actually just removed the language from last year's statement that said we were closed to the public. But we did keep the, the notion that there are alternative waves, and we would advise them to use the online option.
Ted, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
You're looking through. Lucky Ethan was going to try to jump on, that's why it's just waiting a second to see if he.
He's not on there.
Yeah, I know we had another call ahead of time or whatever, so I, that's why I was not going to be able to.
And I think because of the state law is so new, it's just really, it's difficult to know how, you know.
Well, there's that.
Interpretation.
There's that section about real property and whether, right, government property is real property or not. Right.
And I think we're probably thinking about what those words mean a lot more than the people who wrote them.
Maybe.
I do. I think, I think the goal was, you know, kind of is, the news reported it a ton, except I'm back to a lot of articles and all the news reports I found, you know, and it's not looking at the statute, but the news reports, everybody's assumption was this meant we can't tell business owners what to do, and we can't tell other people what to do. Not that we can't manage the safety of our own workplace. And that's, just like any other employer, we have the authority to manage safety issues in our own workplace.
Ethan's on.
Yeah. Ethan, we are talking about the face coverings.
Sure.
And particularly our building. And I, we're kind of under the, we're talking a little bit on definitely protecting the public because we're seeing, I think Story County is in the red zone still, and the numbers that we've seen that have gone up. And requiring employees that, to wear a face covering, and then also. And then also language in regards to the public wearing a face covering as well. And I just said that you and I had a conversation this morning and I know other counties and cities are requiring folks to wear that face covering. So I just, we weren't sure who was all on the line and so I said I didn't know if you were on the line initially to, with your knowledge of the other counties or Story County might be.
Yeah, so my understanding from talking to Alyssa this morning, we had a conversation about what other counties are doing, particularly Lynn County and Scott County and others. And I think different counties have different risk tolerances as far as what they're willing to, willing to do. I think for me legally, reviewing that code section and what it means is up for debate as far as what is a, any other means mean? And what constitutes or who constitutes an owner of real property? That's one level analysis and the second level analysis is what enforcement authority do we have? And we don't have enforcement authority. Nothing's changed as far as that's concerned from our discussions last year into this year. So my recommendation would be to say it's a, Story County requests visitors to wear masks, but I don't think we have the, the authority to mandate visitors to the building to wear face coverings.
So how is that different from our ordinance that we had last year? Well, it's not an ordinance. We didn't have the enforcement authority at that particular time. But we still require people to wear face coverings when they came in the building.
That was prior to the state law being signed. Yeah, that, that's what's really changed everything here, in my opinion. And, and, and put, you know, question, that's why we need to get legal advice on it.
And that was.
Dark legislators.
Well, and I mean, yeah, and if we don't have an enforcement mechanism, we don't have, I mean, we're setting up arguments. Those who are going to cover will respect the request and those who are adamant about not wearing a face covering won't. And, and we're, we're not going to refuse them entrance.
Well, our treasurer just told me that he did, told us that he did the last time. He told people that they would have to do business elsewhere. He said that he thinks if it's ambiguous, it will be followed less often. I would remind everybody that we did a very good job under, you know, when numbers were high of keeping our workplace safe. Few, if any, cases of transmission, you know, that we thought may have come into the workplace. We did a good job of keeping our government services available and accessible to our residents of Story County by doing that. I think that's our job. I heard, you know, that different, there are differing opinions on what, what the law might say. And I, I still say we're probably putting a lot more, looking a lot more at what those words might mean than the people who put them on, on paper. I think jurisdictions will do different things. Some jurisdictions have gotten out there and said our, our, our responsibility is to keep our workplace safe, our employees safe. The workplace is safe for those who visit us. And I'm in that camp on kind of, this is, this is a concerning thing to me. We are in a high-risk transmission rate according to the CDC. We know the things that are happening in August, I did not mention Sturgis. Midwest had outbreak in the fall, last fall after Sturgis. Sturgis is happening the same as it did last year. You know, there's an old saying, sometimes you have to, to cross chasm in a leap. Two small steps, don't do it. That's what I'm feeling right now. We are in a serious situation and I think we need to, we need to, you know, we're not going to make everybody happy. There's no way we make everybody happy in this situation. I think we need to look at our response, bottom line responsibility, which is keeping these county buildings and our workplaces safe.
So I don't disagree and we want to make sure the government continues to function. And we have people that are able to access it and departments aren't closed down because we didn't take that extra precaution. So I, I agree with you 100% on that. I was just looking at, because we've got two separate things. We've got the employee thing as one portion to discuss. The other part, and was caught up on the legislation and not being there to know their intent because I wasn't part of those discussions any longer, of what that meant and what did that, what position does that potentially put the county in? And that's also, also my concern. We do have a lot of options and I think online options too. Paying property taxes or anything else is like my newfound favorite thing, you know? Whatever, what I ever I can do for my, you know, that's more convenient to me, that's, that's what I want to do. I just wanted to also just bring the attention is we don't have an enforcement mechanism. So there's no one that we can call to say, hey, you're not wearing this mask, you know, as the public are coming in. That was my, kind of were for me for bringing up the, the question on this. But totally, totally get it. I talked with Supervisor American, I think both you, both you and I must have reached out to Les White at about the same time yesterday. We've all got emails back from her asking the same type of questions. You know, and just talking about the number of people that were hospitalized. And I asked her about positive cases, the age ranges, and she said the positive cases were age ranges from ages one to 82. So they have had some very young, young people that have tested positive. You know, and then the people in the hospital, people might be in just for a day or two. It's hard to tell because you can't go on the state's website to know what the daily census is anymore because they're only updating by week. So by the time a week comes over, they may have zero, but they may have earlier in the week had, you know, 10 people. You just, you, you don't know. You don't know percentage-wise where your numbers are at because those are only being updated weekly. So unless you're making that proactive call, the public calls to find out, well, what are you seeing in this county?
Yeah, and that, that brings up a whole nother conversation about what I'd like to see us post on the website. I'd like to see us updating that information daily. What, how many positive cases we have, how many positive, and a way for the public to be able to, to look back to, to know, are we increasing, are we decreasing?
And that's maybe some, something to have the board of health have another meeting and discuss what they, are you looking at?
On our website.
On our website.
Yeah, I, I think that's my real frustration is I feel like the other Department of Public Health students want favors right now. You know, publishing weekly. And my concern is if we don't act decisively by the time we, they, we catch up with whatever they put on their website, we're going to be in deep trouble.
Right, you've got schools starting back up, K-12, you've got the universities starting back up. The population of Story County certainly will be increasing as students are coming back to school. So I certainly get that, as you said, I'm just caught up on kind of the intent of the language here and what that means and.
You know, I think it's unclear, I think the intent of the language is unclear and can be, can be argued both ways.
Sure.
And, and I appreciate their civil attorney, his argument is on very, very limited risk, very, very cautious. And I understand that, I understand that from that standpoint. But I'm also looking at the situation we're in right now and people have different risk tolerances. I don't see this as a high risk to say that we require. Granted, we may not be able to force, you know, enforce it in terms of forcibly evicting people, you know? But there's something short of that, which is what our treasurer did, said, you know, we're not going to, we are going to serve you in a different manner. You know, and we're going to have to serve you in a different manner. So you're going to ask that you either use the Dropbox outside, which is one of the things that we also did. Remember, there are many ways, you know, if somebody comes there, they've got this stuff, say, no, use the Dropbox if you're not going to wear a mask. You know, there are many ways to do business with the county. And I think it's, I, I think we're taking a minimal risk by doing this. I think we're taking a greater risk by not being, being insistent that people wear masks in our buildings. There's, there's, there's no risk, there isn't a no risk. There's a, you know, there's a risk of this and the risk of that and that's, you know, that's the reality. I would rather, I would rather, you know, incur a smaller legal risk as opposed to a bigger public risk.
And, and I want to be clear, I, I do think this is a big deal. I do think this is a threat. I, I do take this seriously. I just, for us to say shall with no enforcement mechanism, why, why would we do that? Why would, why would we say you must wear a mask?
No, we, I mean, the ordinance that was county-wide previously, the Board of Health one didn't have enforcement mechanism either. It was only enforceable if the governor allowed that to be. So that's, that's.
Good point.
That that's, we didn't have that enforcement there before. And I, you know, that short period of time when it appeared we had enforcement authority, I don't recall any law officer being contacted during that time as well. So, you know, I can see both sides of that, but I just want to be clear, there was not enforcement authority before. There's not an enforcement authority now on it, which has changed, it's just that language in the legislature.
Thank you.
So.
I agree.
And this would be, if this moves forward to be the other departments, other elected officials would have to adopt this policy as well.
For the, the employees.
For the employees.
For their offices.
For their offices, yes.
And they can also require masks in their own offices.
Yep, but they have that authority, yes, absolutely.
So we're just saying of the areas that we have authority.
The common areas.
The common areas.
Right, right. And that's, and that's why I'm saying we could urge people, but the treasurer could require anyone entering his office.
Oh, public?
Yes.
No. Well.
I mean, he could in the same way that we can, is what, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, if you're buying that we can, why have our office by office and have that confusion?
Right, and I'm saying I don't think we have the authority to do that. That's what I'm saying. Joby, did you have a question or comment?
I did have a question about, it's more about the employee policy. Under the purpose, it mentions social distancing. Was there any intent to do like we had done before, limit capacities on certain rooms?
This room?
This room?
I would think this room we would want to, and that was something I thought about earlier today, but then I forgot to mention. And if it was important before, why is it not important to only have a more easily transmission, permissible variant in our community?
And, and the face coverings, the, the purpose of them for the CDC is when you can't social distance. So if you can't social distance in rooms, that's when they're recommending. I don't think that has changed. A lot has changed, trying to stay up to date on it. But the whole purpose of the face coverings is when you can't social distance in situations, so.
So we were.
We were doing both.
We were doing both and that was probably extra caution, but why not? You know, I mean, I think it's a good thing.
Okay.
I don't know what the other supervisors think, I would suggest that.
So.
Because we'd have, I, I'd have to go back, but some of our rooms that we allow outside agencies to use have booked them at this point.
Yeah.
Some have been booked out for six months, so we might have to go. So if we did a social distancing on top of the face coverings, we'd have to go back and review capacity and how many people they were anticipating attending and may have to cancel some of those.
Well, and the challenge would be that the governor's proclamation on electronic meetings changed and so boards are required to have a quorum of their, they can't do just straight Zoom meetings. They have to have a quorum of a number of people to attend. And so that may be hard for folks to find a place, a new place to meet in such a short, a short amount of time.
And, and from what I've seen, what others are implementing, it's, it's, it's one or the other. Like the face coverings, they're not requiring the six feet or the reduced things. I, I would recommend if the board wants to do that, that, that we take a look at that and, and, and come back in a week or so. I mean, I don't know what your thought is, Joby. Instead of making, you know, let us, let us look into it and really look at the capacity. Not just go ahead and do that immediately, but you know, if you have the face coverings, they are saying that you don't necessarily have to do the six feet social distancing and that hasn't changed, so. That's just my recommendation on the, the capacity.
That's where my stance would be too, is if we're going to have the face coverings, then I don't, I don't feel we need to enforce a, a six-foot separation and have a face covering.
Yeah, the CDC guidance says in areas with high numbers, consider wearing a mask in crowded outdoor settings and pro activities with close contact with others who are not fully vaccinated. So they don't have six foot.
No, and they just say consider, right?
Yeah.
So should we take the issues separately and first deal with the employee policy?
Yes.
See if there's any other questions around it.
Yeah, is there any other questions in regards to the, just the portion on the employee policy? And I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand on Zoom. Starting at the, it looks like it'd be. The policy requires employees to wear face coverings while they're out at work. I'm just trying to. I think that's the motion, but I'm just, that's where I set my period after the end of work. Because then the posting would be the second portion of it.
So I would, I would make a motion that we reinstitute the face covering policy for employees for the recommendations of the CDC.
Second. Is this the second one, any further discussion on that? Faisal?
Aye.
Parkin?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
That's that first portion. And then the second portion which is on here is posting that all visitors to the building over the age of two, regardless of vaccination status, must wear a face covering unless they have a disability or other health condition that presents, that stem from wearing a face, a face covering.
And I would move that we do so.
And is there a second? And is there a second?
I'm sorry, is that a moment? I would move that we post that all visitors to county buildings over the age of two, regardless of vaccine sta- vaccination status, must wear a face covering unless an individual has a disability that prevents them from wearing face covering.
Did I make a summary amendment? To not only disabilities, but did we have before, wasn't it, if they had like a other health consideration? And I only said like something enough, like people came in with like an oxygen. You'd like like oxygen, would that be fall under other health consideration? I just don't remember what it had, what it was before.
I don't remember the wording. I have to look it up. But that would be considered what, what the, the CDC considers as a
Or, or would, that was my, my only thing, because I was, I was
I think disability could be untroubled broadly.
So.
And this is the language off the CDC.
Was I, okay, yep, okay.
There's been a motion, is there a second? I have an issue with must. I have an issue with must, board. Yeah, I I'll second for further discussion. I agree that we don't want to be ambiguous to the public. I do think we are in very challenging times and folks should be wearing that face covering. All that I have read are talked to physicians on the Delta variant gives me concern. Our lack of percentage of people that are vaccinated. And the fact that I believe there's articles that have stated that their areas are having to throw out some of their vaccines because they are not, they kind of plateaued. Not enough people are wanting to get that vaccine. And then the other variants of interest gives me positive concern. We don't have enough people vaccinated. It tends to mutate more and that causes more problems. So that's, that's where I have, that's where my one side, my other side looks at that must word and what, what does that mean? But that other part of me just says, now, when you're looking at the greater good, and if I want to make sure that our employees are safe and public that comes in are safe and we're continuing to be able to offer business as usual, this is probably a direction that we need to. We'll get instituting and then just monitor to see where, where our numbers continue to go at. You know, I know where our percentage was at was at seven point two or eight point two for a seven day or 14 day.
That was a weak end.
Right, right. And when I asked last, you thought it was, I think about similar right now. The question is, is that number going to significantly increase? I can make that assumption, I'm not a medical personnel, but we've got students going back to school, ISU students coming back as well. We don't know anyone's back, excuse me, vaccination status. And there's still a large portion of the population that are not eligible to be vaccinated.
Can't be.
Yes, or can't be.
And those are the laws that you're, you just can't be.
Yeah, they can't be, and there's a portion that are just ineligible yet because they have not been approved for that age range.
Yeah.
So do you, you're on the side of caution in protecting your employees and the people that come in? Or do you just do a wait, a wait and see? And I think at this point, I'm a little bit more wanting to protect the people that I work with. But the word must does give me heartburn. I'm not going to say that it doesn't, but certainly it does give me some heartburn. Could we change it to should? I just don't think we get to pick and choose what law we follow. It's what I feel like we're doing by saying you must. If we're giving, if we're giving advice from our civil attorney that says this is the way he would read it. I don't mean that that necessarily means that he's, you know, always right, but.
I will offer if you put, he recommended requests. I, I do think you'll see more people wearing them if you just put requests. I know it's not required. I know it's not exactly, you, you know, quite, it's a little more ambiguous. I do think you'll see more people wearing them.
More than if we say nothing.
Yes, absolutely.
More than if we say nothing.
Correct.
But if we say require, we'll probably see more
Even more.
than if we say request.
Correct.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, do you try to request first and see if we're seeing the, an increase in number of people wearing them? Or are we seeing no change and then come back and do a require? Or do you just do a require? Right now? I mean, you don't want someone to, the other question is the risk of having someone wants to challenge that, that must.
And we had that before.
I, right.
It's, it's nothing different than we had.
Right.
And people dealt with it in very good ways, I think. And, you know.
I mean, I don't want to see both sides of the, of the, or bring that up.
That we really are facing right now, that we're probably struggling with right now, is when we did this before, I think people were very, very scared because this was a brand new, a brand new thing. COVID-19, we didn't know. People were willing to do things to say, we've really got to get control of this. I think we've become kind of jaded about this. What if some people have gotten it and they've lived? Or some people have gotten it and have died? And some people can't get vaccinated. And I, I see people doing this, you know, really thinking a lot about themselves. Well, I'm okay because I'm vaccinated or I'm, I'm not worried about myself. But we've all got to worry about the other person. You know, that's the thing. We've got to think about, you know, and, and, and we as policymakers here need to think about protecting the other people. People will come in here who aren't vaccinated, can't get vaccinated, but feel like they need to come in here and do business. I think we need to think about that. People may be grandchildren, and I think we need to think about that. And I think about the risk to those people as opposed to the risk that somebody might decide that, you know, that we can't do this legally. Other jurisdictions are doing it. Other jurisdictions haven't hesitated. I'm not sure why we're hesitating. Other than that we maybe have a false sense of overall independence. And some people That is not the sense that I, I know that, and I'm not saying, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't mean to make it sound that way. But that's my concern is that, that maybe people won't take it as seriously unless we leave and say, we need to take this seriously. Maybe it's the other people.
I, there was just something in chat on the employee policy. It says like more clarification on the social distancing standards. Does a flexible barrier constitute distance? Is there a timeframe for the social distance? I.e. 20 seconds? Yeah, I can't read that far away.
There, there, it's, it's, the close contact is, as far as I know, is still within, you know, 15 minutes within, I mean.
Right, that's the last I've seen as well.
That's the last I've seen.
I've read articles that say it's highly, it's much more contagious, 15 minutes should not apply anymore, but I haven't seen CDC guidance on that, but there may be, it may be coming.
And we aren't working through social distancing and employee policy.
It's wearing a mask when you can't social distance.
Right.
Agreed.
Now, I know they have barriers. You know, they have barriers, that, that's within the office of whether they make their employees wear the face coverings with the barriers. I think the barriers do protect them.
Sure.
But.
And we have a motion and a second that was for discussion. Any further discussion? Before vote then? Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
And we have some good discussion on that.
I will get something out to employees tomorrow morning.
That's fine.
Sorry, I have to head.
Sorry to keep you down.
No, you're fine.
I know we were hoping to get you on here.
Yep, but we'll, we'll get something out and provide as much guidance as we can. Unfortunately, the situation changes daily, so.
I will, I'll probably be revisiting as more guidance comes up.
Thank you.
Next one forward, I'll move on to, so you need the discussion and consideration of our proposal from the Ames Chamber of Commerce Foundation. We're using $610,450 for the American Rescue Plan Fund for a workforce training initiative program. So Brenda, if you want to come on up and thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem. This is, this is good conversation. We had the same sort of conversation today at our senior staff meeting, so it was good to hear your insight as well. Just lots, lots to think about, just we thought we'd pass through all the unprecedented territory. Here we are again. So we have our final proposal submitted to you. After we've continued to review the guidance on that, we've been really clear, hopefully, that our proposal is first and foremost to address the impacts that our citizens have had related to the pandemic. And so you'll see, you know, some of the things that we've talked about are, are the same. It's just making sure that we are very clear for the purposes of the intent of the dollars is to putting it in black and white instead of just assuming that, that we all know that's, that's our priority. So I'd welcome any questions you have on what we've submitted.
I just want to thank you for all the work. I know this is about, you know, third or fourth draft.
Yeah.
Because we discussed this, other things came up and also looking at the guidance that we were getting through Nico and others.
No, you know, absolutely, we want to make sure we're right. And I assume we'll be one of the first places that's actually going to venture down this road. I know it's being talked about in other places, so I think it's important to, to make sure we have a clear path. And, and again, I also appreciate how quickly, really, that we are considering this request because the sooner we can get busy to actively recruiting, sooner we're going to meet the needs of our business and industry as well as the ability to impact our families and our communities as quickly as possible.
I, I appreciate the, the addition. You're linking it to the need based on proper things.
Yep. And, and, and the numbers, the numbers speak to that. I mean, you don't go from a year and a half ago to having the lowest unemployment rate in the country. And, and today, that's not the case. And we still have people without work and we can track it right to some of the sectors that haven't had recovery, so.
I'm going to be real interested in looking at that, the graduation classes.
Yeah.
Because I just have the feeling more and more, I mean, that there's just a bunch of lost
Yep.
kids, young adults out there who thought a system was working for them and then the system, you know, their society got upended. And I, I think they're really, so I'm glad you included that.
Well, and we've now, some of us have seen those numbers in various presentations. I mean, we've always been a place that graduates almost everybody. And that wasn't the case the last two years. So people fell between the, the cracks and, and we need to, we need to make sure we're, we're working with our school districts to try to get connected to those people. So we're excited to get moving and you'll see activity, you know, pending your approval here within the week in terms of trying to staff and prepare ourselves to mobilize this initiative.
Yeah, I think this is a great initiative. I appreciate both of you, Professor Merkin and Brenda, for bringing this forward. I like, I also like that in your objectives, we have some goals out there. So you can kind of see that you're on that path
Yep.
for achievement, which I think is a great, great thing. And I also like the industry areas, all the different areas that you're kind of looking at too. You really, then have that assessment of what are those, what are those needs?
And I know I've mentioned it to you, it probably individually, but I would say it for the purpose of, of the public meeting. It, it's really important if we ask people to commit to participating to training, that we're being very systematic in what we've offered so that they get a job. That's, that's the success, that's good stewards of the dollars that have been afforded you all. It's important to not further a person's situation in getting training and not finding a job. And so the involvement of the business community, I think, is really key. And, you know, folks might say, well, why, why the chamber and not a human service provider? It, it really is, I, I think the training's been there. You know, you could find training and seek training. It's really about how do you engage the employers so they feel a part of it? And they have an opportunity and a vested interest as well. And the training is designed with their feedback in mind so that we're not operating in a, in a vacuum of not training. We want, we're training people on stuff that we know will be applicable and transfer to their jobs. So I think our employers, it's, it's nice for us to be able to say, we hear your concerns. We hear you're struggling for workforce. We have a plan in partnership with the, with the supervisors to, to, to identify those needs. So it is exciting to be able to do more than just what we've done in being able to build programs in some of these other areas. So the, the scorecard, you know, we'll, again, in, in a public forum, we'll talk about quarterly reporting on that. So the items we've identified, that doesn't mean we can't add to it with time, but I think those are really those key measurements. And, and, you know, we're going to be able to hopefully tell a lot here in the first six months of, of the program and a few cycles of training, how, how we're doing on that. And are some of these incentives that we're putting into the training making a difference in terms of people completing the classes as well as then going to the next step of actually taking a job? So thanks for allowing that to be a part of the plan.
It just, it's just a win-win.
Yep, I think so too. I think we can check a lot of boxes if, if we're successful in our efforts.
I'm glad that you included funds for some staff time.
Yes.
To coordinate this, because I think that's the one thing that happens sometimes. You say, well, we'll do it with, you know, a group of people and everybody will contribute a little bit of this and that. But I think a program like this and the, the time, the number of people we're talking about, the time to
Yep.
impact and time, we're doing it three and a half years. I think it's only going to be, it's only going to be successful if you have one person who's saying, that's one of my major job duties.
Yep, and going to the people where they're at.
And you've been doing a great job of keeping it going, but you are, you've got so many other hours in the fire that.
Yeah, I've got that little matter of keeping, retaining, retaining and attracting new jobs that I got to worry about too. So, so no, I, I think that's key. And I think that's something folks should know is that it's, it's a plan with really, not an aggressive staffing proposal, but I think enough staffing to be able to support somebody dedicated to be able to spend the time where, I don't know which one of you mentioned me, going to food at first, going, going to the human service providers that are trying to do all the things. And getting a flyer, you know, is, is one thing, but the ability to stop and make a call and say, who do, who do you have that, or make that presentation? I didn't get a chance to tell you Supervisor Merkin, but I did hear from Terry yesterday at the Department of Corrections with four names. So, so, and that was a presentation. Yep, that's, one's outside the area, so now we got to already figure out how do we connect them to training? Because we want to, well, it's great to think within our borders, we can't use our dollars if I can connect them to where they're at to getting some help. But so I think, again, that took a presentation, that took some handholding to say, this sounds great and I've given you the details so I can better communicate it. So I think that's a good example of how that time can pay off.
And are you going to follow up with the county supervisors then?
I didn't know if you wanted to do that or if you wanted to do a tandem effort, but
Let's try to do that together.
Yep, yep, let's follow up on that.
Let's talk about that.
I think, again, that's an opportunity to, that, that there's so much exchange from an employer standpoint, but we'll follow up with them.
And, and we're working on a contract and included standard. And, and we're working on a contract and included, Sandra and I are working on this and we included a quarterly advance drawdown. Because we talked about having the money in advance rather than having to come every time and draw down money because you have one person who needs daycare or somebody who needs the.
And that, that'll work too, because also the, our foundation is involved. So then that, that's a little different way than how we normally run our other, our other business. So that's a 501(c)(3), so again, things have to be done there differently than, so that'll work well. Thank you for that, Sandra, too.
Brenda did all the work on this, I just provided a little bit of input here and there. She's done a great job.
All right, so you ready for motion?
Sure. I would move approval of proposal from Ames Chamber of Commerce Foundation for using $610,450 of American Rescue Plan funds for a workforce retraining initiative program.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Helen? Aye.
Well, it's time to get to work.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda.
Next, we'll move on to discussion and consideration of Resolution 22-14 authorizing the placement of speed limit sign on West 190th Street, 320th West of Grant Avenue. Still morning, so good morning, Darren.
Okay, can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Darren.
Okay. Uh, yeah, what we have on the agenda today is a change of speed limit on West 190th. That, this is in preparation for some possible traffic control changes at the intersection of Grant Avenue and West 190th. I'll get to those in a second. But to focus on the resolution, what it does is set the speed limit to 45 miles per hour just on the north half of West 190th. It goes about a quarter mile to the west of the intersection and then east it goes all the way up to where we have a current 35 mile an hour speed limit that goes down the hill by the, the most lodge. So that is the recommendation for the speed limit change. There is an item on the city council, City of Ames Council Agenda tonight to discuss what change might they make in traffic control. As you might recall, the traffic control decision is really up to the decision for the city only because, because of the curve, it's an odd situation where the road curves. So the stop sign, even on the north side of West 190th, is under city's jurisdiction. What they're contemplating is either adding a four-way stop condition or temporary traffic control signals, stoplights. The city manager at this point is recommending alternative one for the city, which is installing the temporary traffic control signals. Temporary because they're going to do a, a study on a roundabout here in the near future to determine if that's a viable option. If it is, they probably will move forward with that. If not, they've probably moved forward with permanent traffic signals. I should also comment, if they do go with the temporary traffic control signals, one of the other options for the council is to possibly recommend that the county board pay for half of the temporary signals per year. That's just some background on what the city's acting on tonight, but the only action we have right now is the speed limit. And that's going to need to be done regardless of stop signs or stop lights. So I'd recommend we move forward with the speed limit at this time and it will not become effective until the signs are put up. So we can hold off until we can coordinate with the city and put them all at the same time.
Any questions for Darren?
I, I guess I have one question, Darren. I know the, the question was raised about extending the 45 mile per hour speed limit out to George Washington Harbor.
Yeah, I, I had one person call about that as well that lives on that road, they have one of the newer homes just east of the railroad tracks there. I drove it again yesterday to double check and it, it is so wide open out there. If you go 45, it, it feels like you're crawling through that stretch. I'd be pretty uncomfortable making that 45 at this point. The way the county sets speed limits is we do technically a traffic study to see what the, the normal traffic flow would be. And then they, what they call the 85th percentile speed, they set the speed limit at. And I, my guess would be it'd be at least 55 miles an hour if we did an official traffic study on that right now. So I'd be uncomfortable dropping it all the way to 45. I hate to create a speed trap out there when it's not necessary. As the area develops more, maybe it could be changed in the future, but at this point, and, and that stretch is all county, so it'd be strictly up to us. The portion we're going 45 is half city, half county. Cities do speed limits a bit different. And so I told them whatever they wanted to do to 45, the county typically would just match the city, city speed limit at that point.
Thank you. So you don't, you don't have any safety concerns about having the higher speed limit on the county road?
No, it's about a quarter mile. So by the time you stop at Grant and you get up to speed, up to 45, that's about when you're hitting the 55 anyway. So I don't see people hitting the gas pedal and speeding up even more. It's, it's a gradual transition, so I don't see any issues with that, no.
Thank you, Darren.
Any further questions, comments? I, I just want to say, Darren, that, you know, I'm one that gets caught in that particular areas in the morning. So I appreciate that the county has looked at it and that the city is as well. Because it certainly tends to be a traffic jam in that particular area daily.
Yeah, my preference, like I mentioned, to probably be what the city manager recommended would be the traffic signals. My concern with the four-way stops is, one, we've already tried that and the east-west traffic is so used to not stopping. We had to take them back down because half the traffic did not stop, they didn't even see the stop signs. That's one concern. The other concern is if it's a four-way stop, traffic could actually get backed up even further than it currently does. I hate that happens as well. So I think the signals would be the better option, in my opinion.
I can help keep people apprised while it's working.
And Darren, I want to thank you for the traffic information. You got me the accident information in particular. It's, it's pretty interesting, where it's not huge numbers. I see them in the past four years, the accidents have increased at that intersection and they're virtually all some failure, failures, failure to yield on stop signs and failure to yield on left turns. So it's obvious, you know, particularly after Hyde, you know, Grant, excuse me, Hyde, Grant, Gritten was all, all that, all that paving was finished, which was needed, but it really showed that there's a lot more, there are more accidents at that intersection because that's now all pavement up to Gilbert. So, so I'm planning to meet tonight at the city council. I've been talking with city manager about this issue, so it'd be good to have that information. I thank you for all your work with the city engineers on this, Darren. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Any further discussion? Now, is there a motion?
I would move for me for Resolution 22-14.
Second. Been moved in seconded. Markin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Helen's aye. Thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion and consideration to recommend for appointment of, recommend for appointment of the City of Ames Examining Board for Julie Yuland Popkin for a six-year term. It is unclear if we necessarily have to do this at the board table or if it has to be done at the conference board. I kind of think, I, because we are on the conference board and with the city assessor in Ames having stepped away, they're having to form an examining board to request the list from the Department of Revenue in order to start the process for soliciting applications and stuff. I spoke with Julie, she'd be interested in serving on, on this committee. My understanding is the committee will only meet, and it may meet more often just with this particular process, but if there is a new assessor, if they're giving the information and stuff on that examining board will meet. Julie has a background in HR, which I thought that might be helpful for this particular process. And again, it was unclear if we needed to go through here because then as a supervisor on the governing board, you make recommendations there. So I kind of err down the side of caution saying, I think we want to have the discussion here before just bringing it to the conference board and saying, here's our recommendation. Otherwise, all three of us would be bringing potentially three different.
Are you fine with us doing this?
Yeah, I am too. Thank you for reaching out to us. So I would, are you ready for motion?
Sure.
I would move approval of the recommendation for appointment Julie Popkin to the Ames Examining Board for a six-year term.
Second. Okay, been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Helen's aye. Moving on, we don't have departmental reports, other reports, upcoming agenda items. Well, I mean, I guess I, I would like us to talk about adding COVID numbers to our website.
Maybe since Supervisor Helen's just on the board of health, we could just individually send her an email saying, here's some things we have some concerns and you could put them together and, and communicate them to, to us, why?
Yeah, I, yeah, I can do that and see what, you know, if we're doing something on our website, are we wanting to just link it to the board of health website, our numbers? And my, my only thing, I understand what you're trying to get at, is we're only getting it a week, a week of information. And if we're wanting to try to get daily, I want to make sure that I'm talking with us to see if she's got the time or the people to do that when she's not getting it. You know, it's not as accessible like it had been from the state, that would be my, my only.
And she won't know until she knows what we want.
Right, 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 right.
So why don't you start with getting you an email and then you can send her and say, is this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
And I would just say, other upcoming agenda items may be things that come out of our, our workshops that we made, things that may come up from here, but I don't think we have anything else. I don't have anything else we need to do at the time. We'll move on to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meeting laws, but may do so in the future. If there's anyone who'd like to make public comment, unmute yourself or hit the raise hand function on Zoom. I'll meet you, I'll wait a few seconds, as I said, I know technology sometimes takes a little bit. I am not seeing anyone raise their hand, so we will close public forum number two. We've got our leads on assignment screening, updates and analysis. Supervisor Markin, do you want to start?
Sure. I'm going to go to the Ames City Council meeting tonight because I have been working with the city manager regarding 190th and Hyde and also talking with Mayor Gilbert. So I'm going to attend that. And tomorrow I have, tomorrow evening, a 911 Service Board meeting and some other meetings on various issues such as the space needs study and housing. And I've got kind of, here the week next Monday, doesn't look like I have anything going on in particular. But we'll be working on various issues through the week. I did, I did want to say, while I got, I want to apologize to Supervisor Basil, I did not mean to say earlier in our discussion that I thought you weren't taking the Delta variant seriously. I know you're taking it seriously. What I was wanting to say was I think there are people in the community who have gotten kind of lulled into a false sense of this really isn't going to be a problem and that's why I was advocating a stronger stand. And I didn't want, I'm sorry if it made, maybe, if it made, because I certainly know how seriously you're taking it. So I wanted to just take the time to say that.
Thanks, I, I appreciate it. I, I know exactly what you meant, but I do appreciate that.
That's all I know.
Do you have your pencil? Okay, so we've got the area workshop or work session tonight. And then tomorrow I have a Story County College Access Network meeting, also meeting about the space needs study. And then I've got DECAT on Friday, I believe. And then, yeah, that's it. Yeah, I am staying with the OR work session this afternoon. I have our ISAC OR work group meeting on Wednesday. I have the space needs meeting and then I have an ARC meeting Wednesday night. Thursday, I believe, is the, is the barbecue going on? And then I also have an ISAC mental health work group down in Des Moines that afternoon. Actually, it's at 1:30, so I will probably leave here around noon or so to get down to Des Moines. Friday afternoon, I have a meeting. And then Monday, just as an FYI to everyone, that McCall'sburg City Council meeting is to be scheduled for Monday, the 16th. It was scheduled for, for the 3rd and it had to be, it was canceled and was rescheduled to the 16th. I was planning to attend that. I will probably call that Monday morning to make sure that there have been no changes, that meeting, that meeting time or whatever. So that's all that I have on my calendar. There's nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn? We will adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
Helen's aye. We are adjourned.